I will call to order the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Florence. Mr. Harmon, will you take the role?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Prow.
President.
Mr. Simmons.
President.
Commissioner Schmidt. Vice Chair Frost.
President.
Chairman Bronzo.
President.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. I will say the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll move on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four, discussion approval, disapproval, and minutes of regular meeting conducted on August 20, 2020. Open up to the commission. Do we have any comments, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Please.
I'm on page three of five, one, two, three, the bottom paragraph that begins with Commissioner Prow asking if a similar project is operating or this project is an experiment in Florence. Mr. Estill said the closes, I think that's a typo, it should be cul. And then it goes on to say, of the same scale as Disney Wide Roll Sports in Orlando, Florida, that facility is larger. What he actually said was that facility is roughly seventy-five percent of ours, but it'd be a little smaller. And if you needed to reference that, that's on thirty-five minutes, fifteen seconds into the video.
Okay, thank you.
With with that correction, Mr. Chairman, I could make a motion to approve these minutes.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
That was Commissioner Pro?
Yes.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Frost, seconded by Commissioner Pro. All those in favor? I all those opposed, motion carried. All business. This is a public hearing to receive comments regarding a major general plan amendment application, PZ twenty dash twenty-one, submitted by Grindr Sports Group, Inc., for an approximately three hundred and sixty acre residential, commercial, and recreational mixed use development. Before I open this up to the public, I would like the public to understand that this is a major general planned amendment application. And what that simply means is that we are adding a category to our list of zonings. This is not a discussion about the viability or business model of Grindr. So I will open up to the public at this time. Do we have any comments, questions from the public?
Give me just a moment to get everybody allowed and able to talk here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you want any comment from staff at all at this point, or do you want to wait?
Well, I wanted to wait and get the public comments and then if there's anything left over, the commission can ask whatever wasn't already asked by the public.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This amendment, will this come up with a new category for our zoning?
It is a new category for our zoning.
I need to correct you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. This is not a zoning classification. This is a new category of land use for the general plan.
Thank you.
Zoning would still have to be, this is why I was wondering if you wanted me to make a statement, because I wanted to make that clarification early on.
Please do.
Basically, there are no entitlements being discussed right now. What we're talking about tonight is a change in the map of the general plan that would allow for a sports-oriented mixed use, and then to define that category as is written up in the text of the application or of the staff report. There are no entitlements at this time. Those have to be brought back after this first initial step. As a matter of fact, just to be very clear, this doesn't grant the Grinders Sports Group, Inc., any entitlement. This is, this basically, it goes to the land itself. Grinders happens to be the applicant, but there's no restriction on who could apply for this, some kind of a rezoning on this property, once a general plan amendment would be approved, should that happen. Details such as annexation, rezoning itself, and development agreement, all will occur later. This has to go through first before we can get, you know, get to that stage. And so things like a definitive site plan, you have a schematic. You're not approving that as part of this general plan amendment. That is just something for part of the overall thought process and consideration, but the general plan amendment does not approve that site plan. They will still have to do that. They will have to get into the PUD or zoning aspect of it, and that would address, for example, lighting and, you know, parking arrangements and how screening would occur, water usages. Those things are all detailed that would be part of the entitlement process, which would happen after a general plan amendment were to be approved. So I just want to make sure that that was very clear, is you're not doing anything with zoning at this point in time. That application has not moved forward, because at this point in time, the land use classification in the general plan has not been established for this property. So that has to happen first.
One other question, from a town standpoint. When is the tax assessment assigned?
You mean the property tax?
Yeah, property tax.
Well, that's going to be up to the assessor on how they do it. Right now, I believe it's likely to be agricultural because of the nature of the use of the property, and I would presume it would stay that way as long as the, it meets the criteria established by the assessor. So at some point when, around when construction were to start or something of that nature, that's, I would guess that's when the assessor would have the opportunity to adjust the property tax element of it. But the change of the land use category in the general plan is not the actual use of the property until that use actually takes place.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did have one hand raised in the public a little bit ago. It was Becky. She's able and wants to unmute and talk.
Did you say, what did you say her name was?
Becky.
Becky.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Rebecca Turinsky. I'm at one one two nine five East Wallflower Lane. That is in the Magma Ranch one, Florence, Arizona, five one three two.
Thank you.
We, we just have a question. We do want to be annexed into Florence period, whether this goes through or not. So, because we would love to be able to have a fire station closer and the use of new water, possibly, if this company does come through. So we're just wondering, once we annex in, how much, since it's still zoned for agricultural area and residential, our taxes basically right now just go into county. So, as a general fund for taxes. But I was just wondering, what, how can we get a representative to come to our HOA and help us annex in to Florence?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, I'll leave that one to you, Larry.
Yeah, we would be happy to do that. We've gotten a couple of inquiries that way. And actually, I believe there's a Mr. Peacock that has emailed us with the same question. I do have his email. So, you know, I can organize something through him. I was going to contact him tomorrow. Annexation itself for Magma Ranch is not on the agenda tonight, so I can't go into any real detail. But you're, please, contact me tomorrow, and I'd be happy to start that dialogue with you and to meet with you, you know, how to proceed.
Yeah, Larry, this is Justin Peacock. So you got my email address. I'm actually on the HOA.
Okay, Mr. Peacock, you need to be, excuse me, but you need to be recognized and name and address for the record. The chairman will, will call on you shortly.
Okay.
If that, if that covers the question.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Peacock, would you come to the podium?
Yeah, sorry. So Justin Peacock, it's one zero six one one East Marygold Lane, Florence, Arizona. It's a Magma Ranch community. So I emailed, I'm on the HOA board, so you can certainly feel free to get in touch with me, and I can tell you what I've done so far.
Excellent.
As far as annexation. And then I guess all the other questions that I submitted will be further or different meetings, so we can, you could disregard those questions as well.
Okay, thank you very much. But yes, I plan on being in touch with you tomorrow.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. And just to be clear, we are being loose about the public meeting guidelines. We really are not discussing Magma Ranch tonight. Unfortunately, state guidelines do not allow us to respond to questions that are outside of our agenda. We're being loose, and, and because of the format, we're playing in the margins, but we're really here to talk about the general plan amendment. Do we have questions or comments from the public about the general plan amendment?
I have not seen anybody else unmute themselves to speak. Oh, we have Roger and Megan, actually.
We do have another.
Tiffany actually raised her hand if she'd like to speak as well.
Please.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Tiffany. Would you give us your name and address, please?
Absolutely. Tiffany Simmons, and I'm at one three one one two East Aster Lane in Florence. I'm in Magma Ranch Vista's.
Okay, Tiffany, what is, what is your question?
Mine, I think, is just kind of more an overall. This is the first call that I'm joining, and we just newly purchased over here. I'm just wondering, like, the overall scheme of how this process works, like where we are now. We're for this, like, we're for this project and annexation or everything. We would love to have, like, civilization out here, but some nature as well. But I'm wondering, like, what the process is at this point. So like, you move on from tonight's call, like, what are the next steps? And like timeline, how long does this process take if everything goes through as needed? And I apologize if this is something that's been explained or said, but this is something, this is my first call, so I'm kind of new to this. Unfortunately, I apologize.
That's fine. Mr. Harmon, you want to take that one?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. And actually, that's a very good question. I'm certain we, besides you, have other new people on tonight, so I think that's appropriate. The, the way the process works for the major general plan amendment, and I won't go into the background on it, because this process actually started back in April, as I recall. But tonight is the second of two required public hearings for the planning commission. At the conclusion of the tonight's public hearing, they have the opportunity on the agenda to actually make a motion of recommendation either for or against this land use change and the category definition of the sports-oriented mixed use. Once they make, take that action, whether it's for or against, it will be transmitted to the town council. Right now, that schedule is for October fifth in front of the council, where they must conduct a single public hearing and may or may not take action that night. That will be up to them. The action is in form of a resolution of adoption or approval. If they choose to vote against it, then there's no resolution at that time. If it is approved by the council, then the applicant has the ability to start filing for annexation for the zoning that goes with that. To give your, and this gets kind of complicated. I'll be visiting with you all out there in Magma Ranch to go into this more detail, but whenever a property is annexed, they have to annex at the closest comparable zoning classification that the town has that it already enjoys in the county. So it would come in under one of our agricultural zones, and there then have to go through a rezoning. In our, in this case of this project, probably a planned unit development or something of that nature. It gets very specific as to the details that I noted earlier, getting into the site plan, lighting, water usage, retention, all those kinds of things. And, you know, that's a sole separate process. They get asked to go through public hearings in front of the planning commission again, and in front of the town council. At that time, it would be adopted by ordinance if it's successful. And then there's also a development agreement that is being discussed right now in draft form that the council has authorized the town manager to proceed with. The development agreement actually then defines responsibility as to, you know, how, what's the timing is for the development, what they were going to be responsible for as far as improvements and what may or may not be dedicated over to the town. The site plan that they presented as a conceptual shows things like substation for fire and police and things of that nature. Those would be solidified during the rezoning and development agreement process at that time. So right now, we're on general terms, hence the general plan, and it's a matter of providing the groundwork necessary for the application to move forward on the specifics of their development. Hopefully, that helps.
You still with us?
I am. I'm just digesting everything. So the rezoning, all of that, all of that actions that are needed, like, is there a typical timeframe on how something, how long something like that takes?
Kind of. If everything goes smooth as silk, annexation would, you know, and, and the initial zoning would happen first, that could happen in, I don't know, let's, let's say, a hundred and twenty days plus or minus. It could be less, it could be more. A lot of it depends on the applicant themselves and their performance. The same with the rezoning to a PUD or whatever direction it takes. The public hearing processes on that would take about ninety days, plus or minus. And we're, and the reason why those are not hard numbers is because it depends when applications are submitted, how soon they're designated as being complete, that we can move forward. We have statutory advertising requirements, notification of property owners, advertising in newspaper, posting of properties, you know, with notifications of when the hearings are going to be and what the request is. So all of those are statutorily driven, and so the timeline can't really be established until such time that the application is submitted. But that kind of gives you a rough idea. Now, that being said, could all of this be done and accomplished by, let's say, mid-year of 2021? Yes. And without a whole lot of drama, pretty easily, I think. But again, it'll depend on the performance of the applicant and the ability to hit all of the timelines that are required.
So then my last question on this part, and I do apologize for all the questions. So for the supportive homeowner, the supportive homeowners for Magma Ranch and Magma Ranch Vista's, are there things that we could be doing to help support this process and get this to come to fruition?
There, yes, there would be. Throughout the process, there will be opportunities for the public to be involved. The rezoning, for example, requires that the applicant conduct a community meeting or a citizen review meeting, which is a part and separate from any of the town meetings and functions. So that would be an opportunity for them to, depending on COVID precautions, to actually set up a meeting out there and come meet with you face to face to discuss the project. You can lend support at any public hearing. And as I said, there's going to be several of those before this reaches all full entitlements. So yes, there will be ample opportunity, and if you have any, like, more questions, I'd be happy to discuss those with you at any time, and we can discuss them when I contact Mr. Peacock also.
Well, I believe he is Magma Ranch and we're Vista's, and we actually have a different HOA?
I'm, I'm not sure of the dynamics out there as to how your HOAs are set up, but I'm sure I can use him as a base contact to get the information I need to contact, for example, yourself and other residents on your side.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Certainly.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the public? No hands raised?
I do not see any hands raised other than Tiffany still, and I think she had her questions answered.
Okay, then I'll open up to the commission. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Please, Mr. Frost.
On page four of twelve of the packet, as I was reading through the description of a sports-oriented mixed use, the last, basically, the last line in that paragraph talks about, well, it says that the last sentence, the SOMU district shall incorporate spaces for, and lists a bunch of things. And the last line, it says, with permanent family residences and associated daily living services. Now, I, I know from the presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago that the intent at some time is to have some sort of lodging here, hotel motel, something like that. Is this the descriptive language for that? It seems a little bit cryptic to me.
Now, this, this language, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Frost. The language is a general overview of what we would actually place as part of the general plan itself. Specific detail, again, would have to come forward as part of the development agreement and PUD. There's different residential types that could be supportive of the sports-oriented mixed use. You know, family residential, permanent, could be in the form of condos, townhouses, something of that nature, as opposed to transient housing or transitory housing. It could be more in the form of dormitories for anyone that, you know, it's in a, they're on a long-term basis for training purposes, things of that nature. That's the general intent.
Okay, I guess just to cut to the chase, does this language allow them to do the hotel motel that they are, that they are planning there?
Yes, it would. That's the transitory housing portion of it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I was unfamiliar with that verbiage.
Good or bad, it's planner ease.
Okay. And then my next question is on page six. There are two sections at the top of the page, project area one and project area two, but I'm not quite sure where those are. If one is the north and one is the south one, I just, clarification on that?
Certainly. As a matter of fact, we did get a comment yesterday that I wanted to let the commission know that we're going to follow up on. We didn't have time to get it prepared for tonight's meeting, but we are going to be putting together a graphic that'll be part of it, whatever you move forward as a recommendation tonight in the council's report, that really shows a more regional, if you will, layout of where this project lies as it relates to downtown and Merrill Ranch and those types of things. So you will, that will be added to the council packet. Project area one, and that's, the definition of that is written very, or the location is in the very beginning of the staff report under request. Their project area one is the approximately ninety-six acres that's located at the southeast corner of Judd and Felix roads. Project area two is approximately a half a mile north of that intersection, again, on the east side of the road. I could also define it as the southeast corner of Felix and Bella Vista, although Bella Vista does not come through.
Yeah, I know. I'll shut her up.
That's the other thing you run into running from home. Yeah, that northern piece is approximately two hundred and sixty-one acres, round numbers.
Okay, very good. I just missed that in my reading, so I appreciate that. I think one of my last questions is, this refers to annexation. Is there existing town annex land that budding this?
Yes. The southern portion, yes. That one was an easy annexation. The northern portion, there is a out parcel that is, some people refer to it as Magma Ranch three. It also has, you know, another, another name in the county that escapes me at the moment. But that property would have to be part of the annexation of the northern parcel. That property, it's our understanding that is, has been contacted and is in agreement, very agreeable to part of that annexation. That would meet the criteria we would need at that time.
Very good.
Yeah, it's on, it's in the map, the map in the staff report, the aerial that's in there, and the parcel map immediately to the west of the, it's kind of a trapezoidal parcel immediately to the west of the northern piece. It kind of borders, the canal railroad track is on the north side, and then it drops down and is at the, the northwest corner of Judd and Felix.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Any other commission members?
And, Mr. Chairman, we did have one other number that unmuted themselves.
Who is that?
It's a six oh two three seven six seven seven two seven number.
Am I speaking to a commissioner?
No.
This is, uh, this is Sean in IT. I was just letting you know that there was another person that unmuted, but it doesn't appear they're, they're talking, so.
There was another person for public comment?
They just put their phone to unmute, so.
Can you hear me? My phone is unmuted.
Yes, it would be someone from the public, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, all right. All right, I'll open back up to the public. Who am I speaking with? Your name and address, please?
This is Paul Saylor. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Saylor.
Thank you. Paul Saylor, and we are at one one two zero one East Magma Road in Sun Valley Farms, south of the first parcel. And the, and the question I had is, if somebody could answer how the, the first parcel south of Judd relates to the major project to the north of Magma Ranch, why are they included as part of the same package?
I think that would be a question we would defer to the applicant.
Okay. And, and where can we find more information you're referring to? We, we just showed up today. We missed the last meeting, but where is the information? Well, this is presented, the, the paper and the, and the documents. Is there something we can get a hold of?
Absolutely. On the town's website, lawrenceaz.gov, on the very front page, if you scroll down a little bit on the left-hand side, it says Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for September third. If you click on that, it opens it up, and that information is all contained in there.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a representative, the applicant, to address his question?
Yes, please, if there's a representative available.
Absolutely. Thank you. I, I guess, to answer, to answer your question very directly, the, the southern, the southern property is a supportive infrastructure to the operations that are going to be held within the, within the major sports complex, as well as, you know, put in place to support community need from a vast variety of amenities, of restaurants, entertainment, you know. It's, this, this whole entire project, frankly, is a community support project. You know, it's really fully integrate into the community needs to bring missing or observed to be missing amenities and commercial and opportunities that, you know, currently the, the residents of the area and, and the community don't presently have and are traveling, frankly, at long distance to enjoy, you know, whether it's, you know, a, a night out for a restaurant or for movies or things of that nature. or movies or things of that nature. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, and I assume there's documentation that shows what those uses are. We, it, it looked to me like a commercial development, so I didn't know if it's beyond. We did see a fire substation or police substation, but we weren't sure to the extent if there's a school involved or if you're saying it's, it's retail and restaurants and those type of things. We, we live obviously just south that area and we are concerned about the urbanization of, of our neighborhoods. So, um, movie theaters, et cetera, are not at all in line with, with where we live or the ability of the traffic, the roads and whatnot to handle that.
I, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, we, again, to clarify, we're not approving that site plan or anything at this point. That, that is not up for discussion, uh, as far as any action by the commission. I mean, the questions are good, but there can be no definitive answers at this point in time. That would wait for the, uh, rezoning, uh, and development agreement process. So these are strictly conceptual at this point.
And we will be notified, uh, of these meetings same way with the, we just saw the sign, but will there be mailers to the neighborhood?
Within a certain radius of those properties, yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I had.
Wait, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have a few comments that we'd like to read into the record also.
Please.
We have a.
Who's commenting?
Mari Sella will read these in.
I will read in emails sent for comment.
Okay, Mark, go.
The first email is from Monty Barriola at two, one, four, nine, West Cheyenne Drive, Chandler, Arizona. The question is, the specific location has been asked by many people on Facebook. We show a regional map showing the sports complex in relation to existing town limits, downtown Florence, Anthem at Merrill Ranch, an intersection of Bella Vista and Hunt Highway and San Ten Valley. The second email was from Justin Peacock. He addressed his comments in the hearing and he said we can move over to the next comment if that's okay.
Please.
Okay. The next comment is from a Josh Brimhall. He said, I am a representative from Langley Freedom Farms LLC, the property located adjacent to the proposed location of Grinder Sports Complex. At this time and with the information we have, we'd like to voice our support for this project. Thank you for your time in giving us the opportunity to provide our input. His office is located at two, seven, three, eight, East Guadalupe Road, Gilbert, Arizona, eight, five, two, three, four. That is all the comments we received by email.
Thank you, Ms. Benitez. Are there any other questions, comments from the commission? Then I will close the public hearing and move on to new business.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I, I don't believe I do, do I?
To what?
A motion to close the public hearing?
You can certainly do it formally.
No, no, not, oh, go ahead. Maybe I, I got ahead of myself. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I think Mr. Frost might have been referring to six A and he was ready to go.
Yeah, so am I. Alright, moving right along. The, under new business, discussion, motion to recommend approval or denial to establish sports oriented mixed use as a land use category for the Town of Florence twenty twenty general plan, subject to the language contained in the staff report dated September third, assign that, uh, that September third, I need a year and assign that land use designation to a major general plan amendment application for PG twenty dash twenty-one submitted by Grinder Sports Group Inc. for approximately three hundred and sixty acres. I'm going to assume that the September third, twenty nineteen?
No, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Today's staff report.
Okay. Just to know I was, alright, so I'll open up to the commission. Questions, comments oriented, sports oriented mixed use. Okay, so I'm judging by the silence. We don't have any questions or comments. Then can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion. This is Frost. Move to recommend approval to the town council of the major general plan amendment for Grinder Sports Group Incorporated, as shown in the attached exhibit and the language that establishes sports oriented mixed use as a land category, land use category in the Town of Florence general plan.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
And that was?
Commissioner Simmons.
Commissioner Simmons. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. B, discussion regarding development prospects south of the Gila River closer to downtown Florence. I believe I provoked this. Why note it?
This should be a good discussion, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I want to give you just a little bit of background. We added this at, at the chair's request. A couple of things are in the works right now that I want to kind of update you on just to make sure that you are current. And then whatever discussion, Mr. Chairman, you'd like to move forward with, uh, we can go from there. First of all, uh, the town is in the hiring process right now of an economic development director. They had a first review of applications, uh, a couple of weeks ago, although there were no candidates at that time that, that I guess jumped out to the review group. I'm not part of that, so I'm not sure this, you know, how that all went, but it has been re-advertised or the advertising is continued and the second review is next week. So there may be qualified applicants come out of that. And judging from some of the comments and discussions that have happened at council, uh, previously at, uh, work sessions with the HDAC and, um, among themselves, the downtown or old town or whatever you want to call Florence proper is going to be a significant topic of, uh, topic of discussion as far as the work program for that individual when they are hired. Uh, second, uh, there is, uh, then activity, uh, in downtown. Uh, as some of you have probably observed, there's been a number of the individual vacant lots in various residential areas that have gotten either new homes or have homes under construction currently. Um, there's a renewed interest in that. There are several more that I know are in the design stage right now or we're just waiting for building permits to middles. The remaining lots in, um, Sunrise Estates two, south of Butte, uh, on the west end of town, had eighty-nine or has eighty-nine vacant lots in it that were platted back around oh, four, oh, five. Um, a, uh, home builder has acquired or is in escrow right now on those lots and is actually going forward to amend their final plat to reduce it down to eighty-three in order to make accommodations for drainage retention requirements and their particular model of home. Uh, but that is, uh, uh, the first review of their modified final plat has been submitted and has been distributed, uh, to the town engineer for their review and comments. So there is renewed interest in downtown. Also up in the, um, northern area, uh, just north of the parking lot at the community center, uh, the council authorized the release of a request for proposals. Um, Modus is a development company, residential company out of Scottsdale that has responded to that. The council has authorized, moving forward with a development agreement, a discussion. There has been no final determination on the sale of the property yet. They're still in that phase of negotiation of the development agreement, but that would be for a, um, residential rental project. But the general proposal is for single-family or duplex type rental as opposed to high-rise or, uh, apartments. Modus has, uh, done numerous projects around the valley. Um, I believe they are working in one in Casa Grande also, and they can be, uh, Google searched if you want to get more information on them. Um, there's also been some recent, and, and none of, some of these are not a hundred percent confirmed yet. You know how the rumor mill works, but it, it appears like there have been several properties on Main Street that have recently been sold to various business prospects. Either, you know, some have been sold or some are actually looking very much in earnest at some of the vacant buildings on Main Street to move forward with businesses in those. So, uh, we, we're working as, as best we can with those, with those folks. And moving forward, uh, once they actually purchase the property and file, um, permit uh, request or business license or whatever, then that becomes public information. Up until then, you know, we have nothing firm to, as far as naming names, but indeed there is interest and, and people are, seem to be moving forward around downtown. That's kind of a, a summary, uh, of the activity that's been occurring, I'd say, over the last six months.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Just to reaffirm, um, and I've made these statements public, so it's no surprise, the redevelopment south of the Gila is near and dear to my heart. Um, not only because I live here, but because the town has been deteriorating for quite some time now. So I'm very happy to hear that there is some turnaround. The vacant lots, the abandoned buildings, things of that nature, are causing the property prices to diminish. So hopefully, um, whatever's causing this, I suspect maybe the rumor of Grinders, uh, whatever's causing this interest south of the Gila, I hope it continues. But I don't want us to take our eye off the ball. Um, I, I would really like to know where this interest is coming from, from an investment standpoint. Um, and perhaps we can take advantage of that. So thank you for responding for my, to my comments from our last meeting. And, uh, again, um, I hope that, uh, we can continue to move forward, um, with redevelopment of south of the Gila. Is there any other questions or comments concerning, um, south of the Gila River? From the commission? Then I'll close that part of the meeting. Um, we'll move on to presentations. This is for information only. General plan update. Mr. Harmon, you're getting to do a lot of talking tonight.
Well, I'm good at it.
Gift of gab.
Yeah, good or bad. General plan update. We actually met this morning, uh, with our consultant. Um, we are getting close to putting up on our website a preliminary document, not, not of a final, you know, of the general plan itself, but more of a comment, try to solicit input from citizenry. Um, we're working on the nuances of that to make it as interactive as possible. Any of you that have been in a consensus building type of meeting before or seminar or something, if you remember the old, uh, colored dot, uh, program where you're issued so many dots and you go put your dots up on your preferred, you know, use or preferred design or whatever, we're going to do that electronically. Uh, we've got an interactive website that you'll be issued, and I think it's unlimited in this case, pushpins that you can get in and actually, uh, you know, mark up certain areas of the community where you might want to see particular type of land use. Uh, right, there's a, the provision for doing a write-up where you can actually put in comments for or against something in a particular area, all those types of things that would be very interactive. We should be getting, um, a, uh, sample of that, I would say, over the next thirty to forty-five days that staff will review to make sure that it works. Uh, and so we'll be kind of giving it a beta test, if you will, and kind of running it through its paces that way. And then once they get the bugs out of it, it'll be posted on the town's website. And at that time, in cooperation with Ben Bitter, um, getting things out on social media, uh, letting people know that it's there and how it can be accessed and, and the things that relate to, uh, making comments as far as the future of the community.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I have one, and it may be premature, uh, Mr. Harmon. Something I'm very interested in would be light industrial. Is that something that we're looking at with our general plan update?
Yes, sir, it is. Uh, Mr. Chairman, any land use is going to be, uh, a viable discussion in the way this, the way this interactive, uh, website is going to be set up. So if there's, you know, comments, either, uh, you want to pick out certain areas where you think it's appropriate or you want to make generalized comments, that opportunity will be part of this interactive program.
Okay, but maybe I need to be a little more specific. From a planning standpoint, you as a professional planner and really, um, what would be the word, supervising this update? Is staff discussing, um, light industrial use?
Well, employment opportunities in general, yes. As met, now that we have a preferred alignment, for example, of north-south corridor, we can get more specific on what types of land use would be appropriate along a freeway corridor, things of that nature. And so employment base, whether it falls under business, office or industrial, will all be part of that discussion, yes.
Okay, and the alignment hasn't moved further away from us?
Yeah, well, if you look at the, uh, twenty twenty general plan, it's a little different than that one. Uh, but, uh, it is actually on ADOT's website right now. And well, and that's being, that'll be transferred into our general plan document and study area.
Okay, and maybe we all live long enough to see it. Uh, any other questions or comments concerning the general plan update? Okay, then we'll move on to the redevelopment plan update. Again, Mr. Harmon.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, the redevelopment plan, of course, is a lot further along than the general plan, but we are in this process of doing exactly the same thing. We have an interactive document, uh, that we're beta testing internally right now that we may have live as early as the end of this month or the first part of October. That will be a draft redevelopment plan update. And again, it'll be the same thing. There'll be areas where you'll be able to make comments, but it's extremely interactive. If you want to focus on, uh, you know, residential uses and where they're appropriate, there'll be a specific link for that. And, uh, and basically all this information is what's come out of the public meetings that have been held, uh, prior to the shutdown due to, uh, the COVID precautions. So, um, that one, we've been working with the consultant on and hopefully we'll have that up on our website for review and, and, uh, input and comments by, like I said, around the end of this month.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I have a comment. I don't know if it's appropriate because I really don't know the scope of the consultant's, um, contract, but I'm very interested in what they would consider to be the appropriate density to support our commercial district. And, uh, also on the, uh, on, on the cash flow, what they, what they would think is, uh, the minimum salaries or median salaries we should have in order to support our commercial district. Is that inside their scope?
Um, the, uh, salary portion of it is not, but as far as density of housing and appropriate locations, yes.
Great.
They're in the land use plan. When, when you see it, you'll, it'll demonstrate variety of different areas and, uh, different level, levels of density. It'll be, be appropriate for housing on different parts of Main Street. Uh, predominantly, of course, south of Butte, because that's where most of the vacant property is at this point for new development. Um, but still it puts it within the redevelopment plan corridor area.
Okay, well, we, we have a ton of vacant lots that's really peppered throughout the entire south of the Gila area. Um, I, I understand developers would like a large swath to work inside, but I'm also interested in the single lots. I'm also interested in the single lots. I, I know that's going to be a little bit more difficult, but all of that is a density that contributes to a successful commercial area. Do I have any other questions or comments on the redevelopment plan? Okay, moving right along. Transportation plan presentation scheduled for October first, twenty twenty. I'm not sure what all that means.
At the last meeting, that was discussed, it was brought up by Vice Mayor Anderson, the council liaison to planning commission. Did contact Christopher Solis, the town engineer about the presentation that he had given to the council and for your upcoming meeting dates, he suggested or selected that one as the one that was the best for his schedule to do the same, similar presentation. And at this point in time, where there's no other action items scheduled for that meeting, so basically it could be focused around the transportation, that's.
Can we do that as a, a work session?
No, it can be done in the regular meeting, it'll just be a, a presentation item.
All right, I want to be able to interact with them.
Yes. Most definitely be able to do that.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission? Okay, I'll take that silence as no. Future agenda items, information only.
Just to keep you all current, your next meeting is scheduled for the seventeenth. At this point, there are two agenda items. One of them is still a little tentative, but we think it'll be going forward, that is the design review for the new circle K located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway. The other item is a zoning amendment, a text amendment to the zoning code or to the development code that has been requested to, in the, for the downtown, for the downtown commercial district to allow a church or churches as a permitted use. And so, but right now, that one is a public hearing. And that one has already been advertised for the seventeenth. So unless the applicant, for some reason, were to withdraw his request, that one will be moving forward, it would be in front of you for a public hearing and possible action at that meeting. The design review is just a motion to approve.
Any questions about the future, Joe? Well, that's information only. Moving on. A call to the public. Call it a public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Basically, what all of this means is if it's not on the agenda, we can't respond. But if someone wants to make comments or a question that we can't answer, we can refer to staff. Do we have any questions or comments from the public at this time?
Do you have a question from liaison, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Last meeting, we talked about for the Grinders complex that Johnson Utilities would provide water and sewer. That may not happen, so Johnson has agreed, my understanding, that Johnson has agreed to provide water, but they cannot provide sewer. Their plants are currently over text and so either the town or Johnson, one is going to have to build new sewer plants. And at this point, that hasn't come to fruition yet as, as to who's going to do it. Johnson pretty well says they're not going to do it, they want the town to do it. Want you to know that that's still up in the air.
Because it's not on the agenda, we cannot respond to it, but thank you, sir, for the information.
Yeah, I'm not expecting you to, I just wanted to correct that because I think Mr. Blazer asked about that at the last meeting.
God, I hate it when I have a question I can't ask. Moving right, do we have any other questions or comments from the public?
Do not see anybody in meeting themselves at this time, so.
Okay, then I'll take that silence as a no. Call to the commission, current events only. Do we have any current events, gentlemen? We are a lively bunch, okay? Doesn't sound like we have anything from the commission. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adjourn. This is.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
I will second.
The Commissioner Pro. Motion made by Commissioner Pro, seconded by Commissioner Simmons, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Do we have an opposed? That would be a first ever.
No, no, sir, there was just a lack, a lag there.
Okay.
Lag of approval.
Then we are adjourned.